Adoption of the agenda.
Nothing for me. Uh-oh. Oh, Chris.
All right. Thanks for the update. Oh, excellent timing, public comment.
Hurry, hurry, hurry.
I don't see any Betty. Select Board's announcements?
I don't really have any, no.
No?
No.
Actually, last night David and I went to Safe Harbor Marina. Kenny's Harbor was donated a new fireboat. A very elaborate fireboat, a Munson, what is it, like thirty foot?
Twenty-eight foot, I think, but...
Twenty-eight foot, basically a barge. It's got a loading ramp in the front for equipment.
Oh, wow, wow, wow.
It's quite a weapon. So, all three departments were there, the chiefs were all there. I would say almost all the members of all the fire departments showed up.
Yeah, yeah, quite a few people there.
There was supposed to be food.
Yeah, what happened with that?
I don't know, had to eat somewhere else. But anyway, it's quite an addition for the town and the offshore islands and that kind of thing, so...
Absolutely, it was donated.
Anonymous donor, and so thank you anonymous donor.
Wonderful.
Yeah, yeah, it was a nice turnout. Anyway, that's all I have. You got anything, Jane?
No.
Town administrator's report.
Good evening, everyone. Have a few items this evening. The first is the town's hiring team, which was comprised of select board member Jane Covey, town administrator Kristi Ayana, and planner Mark Ironman. And we're here to recommend a hire as town planner of Matthew James. Matthew most recently worked in Bowdoinham as a code officer reviewing planning board plans. He has a degree in anthropology from the University of Maine, and he's working towards his master in quantenary and climate studies. He has, he has strong writing skills, research and analytical skills, plus experience at the local level handling permits. The full board ended up doing a second interview and made a job offer to Matthew and is here tonight for consideration. I don't know if select board member Covey has anything she'd like to add about the candidate.
Just that Matt comes to us with experience in the codes office and functioned for a period of time while he was in that position, functionally as the assistant planner in the town of Bowdoinham. So he comes with a couple of years of background, and we are very excited to have him come on board so that we can work with him to build the specific skills and knowledge of Harpswell that he will need going forward. And hence, Mark is going to spend some time with him during a transition period to, I called it a brain dump, I don't know if you would approve of that, Mark, but to help him focus and get up to speed as quickly as possible.
So the recommendation is to hire Matthew James with a starting salary of $60,000.
I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
The next item is every three years we do receive a letter from Cumberland County regarding the Cumberland County Development Block Grant Program and whether the town of Harpswell would like to remain in that program. Staff, we've been in it since its inception in 2007, and the town has received just over $500,000 in grants. There's eighteen municipalities involved in this grant pool, which is if we did not participate in this, you have to apply for community development grants from the state of Maine. Far more competitive. We were never successful at one of those grants, and so staff is recommending that you remain in here. But if you would like to withdraw, we do need to notify Cumberland County by July 17th.
I think we should remain, and I move we do so.
Second.
All in favor? Same vote.
And then there's some good news on the harbor side from your harbor master, Paul Plummer.
Good or bad, depending how you look at it.
Well, he, I think it's great news that the Jacob Pike is going to be removed from the waters where it sank during, between the storms of January 10th and the 13th. And due to, you know, letters of support from the select board and the USCG Sector Northern New England, was able to get final approval from Admiral Linda Fagan of the United States Coast Guard that they will remove it in the next couple of weeks. I have to say, while Paul, it was a team effort. Paul really led this, and he did an amazing job to stay on top of this project and see it through and get funding for the removal of this Jacob Pike. So that's good news.
So, right, so the reason I said it's good and bad is because it's good that it's coming up, but it looks like the plan is to just take it out and dump it somewhere, so...
It's going to industrial yard in Portland.
Oh, really?
Yard, and it's gonna be dismantled there.
Dismantled?
Dismantled.
Ooh, well...
It's basically a $200,000 plus probably project.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and we don't have to fit the bill.
That part's good.
I just want to emphasize what you said, Terry, about Paul's leadership in this. It's a big deal that the Coast Guard has agreed to do it.
Absolutely.
And I think we owe him, him and everyone else who was involved, a real thank you for that.
And getting the Coast Guard to do it was a lot of work, I know it was.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
It was, totally agree. I would like to let the select board and the public know that after your workshop with Thayer about the HVAC system here at the town office, Thayer has submitted the proposal for installing a new system, which we will have on your meeting in two weeks. Just wanted to announce we've received it, and I'm sending it to the Energy and Technology Committee, and it's expected to be on your July 25th meeting for consideration.
Wonderful.
And then the last thing, I would just really like to also point out for those of you who have not had the pleasure of driving down by the old townhouse. The town has been embarrassed for several years about not being able to get painters to bring this historic building back to the condition that it deserves, and it's been done. And so Ken Beebe of Harpswell Paint Company, they've completed the project. Well, in a conversation with him today, he has minor things to do. Scrape paint off a couple of windows, but it looks really amazing. Instead of getting a pit in our stomach when we go by, we're pleased to go by. And on tonight's consent agenda, you will see that part of the board's work scope was not for the carriage house to be painted, but the carriage house has been painted and the funds have been donated by Helen Norton. So the whole property looks really nice. We need to focus on the shingles, which will be done late August, early September. It can't be done when the humidity and the temperatures are in the nineties.
Right.
And then we need to focus on some of the stones work. But we're making progress, and that looks wonderful. So I just want to make sure everybody was aware that that work has been done, and it looks great. And that concludes my report, thank you.
All right, thanks. Consent agenda.
I move the consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes, and accept the carriage house donation, which was mentioned, and the committee appointment, and authorization of warrants.
Second.
All in favor? We're a couple of minutes early, but since I don't see anybody here probably in opposition, we'll open the public hearing regarding a music license for Fishnet Cafe at 218 Harpswell Island Road.
2118.
What's that?
It's 2118.
What'd I say?
218.
That's what you get for reading my glasses?
You were off by a...
So the board recalls that the town has a Harpswell special amusement ordinance, adopted May 5th, 1978. So any establishment that has a state issued alcohol license, so a license to issue malt beer and liquor or any of the combination thereof, if they want to offer any entertainment, it has to comply with the ordinance, which requires an ad, the municipal officers to run an ad in the local paper, the applicant to reimburse the town for that, a $15 application fee, and that you will hear of any concerns at your meeting. And Sarah could not make it this evening, but her application and the conversation I had with her, you know, she's looking to offer a karaoke night, one to two nights per month, on Saturday nights perhaps, and some live music, one to two nights per month, but done by 9:00 PM and only through the summer. And that is before the board for consideration. While the ordinance doesn't require, I did send notices to the abutters as well.
I was gonna ask you that.
The abutters or landlord, so... At this point, any discussion, and nobody out there? At this point, we'll close public hearing.
Okay, I move we issue the permit.
Second.
All in favor?
Which is good for one year.
Yep. All right, planners' report. Can you make it eighteen minutes?
What was that?
Can you make it eighteen minutes?
Sixteen.
Sixteen and a half.
Sixteen and a half.
That's an in-house joke. Solar expression of interest. The select board directed the Energy and Technology Committee and the Mitchell Field Committee to provide input back to you on the potential development of an expression of interest to develop a commercial solar array at Mitchell Field to lease land for the development of a solar array. The two committees met Monday night. It was a, I'm gonna describe it as a confusing meeting because first issue was people thought they were dealing with the proposal that had come from revision, and we had to go through explaining that that wasn't what we were doing. Second of all, people didn't, all didn't understand what an expression of interest was as opposed to a request for proposals. There was considerable concern about why the town would be asking for expressions of interest to do this. But the, what came out of the meeting is they created a subcommittee consisting of three members of the Energy and Technology Committee and three members of the Mitchell Field Committee. Spike Hyble informed me this afternoon that they have agreed to meet the week of July 15th, I think that's next week, to work on that, and that some work is already underway to identify a list of firms that might be interested in receiving the expression of interest. So that's where we are.
I just want to point out that these meetings need to be on the calendar. They'll be open to the public. Subcommittees, I know typically they're not a quorum, but the Energy and Technology Committee is a small size, three members do make a quorum. And I think this is a matter of interest for the public, and so we want to make sure that the meetings are noticed on our calendar and that it's open to the public.
And Mr. Chairman, after Terry and I discussed this this afternoon, I emailed the two chairs to make sure that they were aware of that, and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Will they be recorded? Will they be recorded?
I mean, typically we wouldn't. We're not doing all committees at this time, but if it's a request from the select board, then we take our direction from the select board.
You really want to see how sausage is made?
I'm, I'm not so concerned about that, as long as people know there may well be interest. We, the select board received, I don't think I passed it on to you yet, Terry, an email from a member of the public who had been a previous member of Mitchell Field to remind us of the concerns that had been raised about putting solar on there. So I will see to it that that gets to you, and we'll go to the subcommittee. Great. But I would expect there would be a fair amount of public interest. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, just so we're clear, the task of the subcommittee was to develop the information that you had requested. List of firms that might be contacted to see if they had interest, information about sort of what the expression would say about the location, the size of a potential facility, et cetera. So they are not charged in their formation with the merits of whether there should be an expression of interest. That's up to you. They're just providing feedback to the select board.
And maybe I could just make a comment, Mark. First to say, do you feel they have enough clarification now?
Well, the answer is after two hours, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, missed it.
But you said that the question came up of why are we even doing this in the meeting? And I just want to speak to that, since I was the one who recommended that we take this course of action. We did receive unsolicited from revision, a proposal. There was presentation made to the select board. And were we, I had two, I had two areas that I thought we should move forward on. One, not treat it as a single sole bid kind of situation and go forward in considerate, so that we should have other expressions of interest if there was any out there. And two, to bring this potentially to the November ballot so there can be a clear decision. Since we have no policy yet, we have something in the master plan that says it could happen. It's been discussed for many, many years, and still at the question, we don't know if we want to have that at Mitchell Field or not. We would be able to provide a concrete set of information to the public so they could say, yes, this is what it would mean, yes or no, up or down. So hopefully that we can get there, maybe by November. And I would request that we get from the subcommittee some kind of a timeline for when we can expect to hear back from them.
I'll convey that to them.
So that we can have the potential for November open.
Keeping in mind, of course, if there is a November vote, and if it's by ballot, it has to be, it has to be provided to the town clerk's office by September 5th.
Right.
Thank you.
We're good?
Want me to keep going?
I do.
Right to fish draft policy. Probably six months ago now, the town was approached with a request to adopt a right to fish ordinance. After a draft of that was put together, it went to the town's legal counsel, who advised us that it probably shouldn't be an ordinance, but it could be a policy, that it was not something that could be binding on future select boards. That went through a couple of drafts and reviews. What you have before you is sort of what I would call the final draft of policies, policy statement by the select board dealing with the town's policy with respect to commercial fishing.
Why wouldn't we want it binding on future select boards?
Because your legal counsel advises you that you cannot bind a future select board, just like an ordinance. The town meeting can change an ordinance.
Correct, but if it's an ordinance, it has to go before a town meeting in order to be enacted.
Right, and this is a policy. And the, the select board can adopt the policy, but that doesn't mean that a select board five years from now can say, we want to change the policy, we want to do away with the policy. You can't stop a future select board from doing that.
Understood, but why wouldn't we want to make it, why wouldn't we want to make it a, why wouldn't we want to take it to town meeting and make it a little more permanent? Then if it's changed, it has to go to town meetings rather than the select board whim, putting it in, taking it out, changing it. I mean, why, why wouldn't we want to?
I can, I can only say that the town's attorney advised against doing that.
I wasn't in on those conversations, Mark, but I thought I heard at first when it was presented as an ordinance, was it too, did it conflict with some things within the ordinance? And so she thought this was cleaner, or...
Amy was concerned about that it made certain commitments relative to funding an informational program, that it made commitments about making changes to ordinances, and that the definitions of commercial fishing and commercial fishing related activities were too broad, even though they came from the state or law and rules.
That was the other question I had, because there was some discussion in here about the, about that. Why, I'm, so I don't really understand why she wanted to take that out of the definition.
Amy's position was, I guess I would, it's hard to put words in her mouth, but, but I think if there are questions about that, the select board should deal directly with Amy. But I think the, the issue was Amy's concerns fell in two categories. One, that the definition, let's back up. Commercial fishing is allowed essentially anywhere in the community. There is not, however, any definition of commercial fishing in the town's ordinances at this point. So one of the ideas was to add a definition of commercial fishing. The proponents, who are sitting behind me, suggested, proposed using definitions that are in the state regulations relative to how commercial fishing can or cannot be treated as a nuisance. Amy felt that those definitions were too broad in that they would allow essentially anything, anywhere that was related in any way to fish marine life, what have you. Secondly, she was concerned that those definitions overlapped and potentially conflicted with other definitions. So for instance, there is a use in a definition of aquaculture in the ordinance. There is some definitions of other marine activities. And so Amy's suggestion was to sort of sever the discussion about the definition of commercial fishing and come back to that as a separate item.
And, and as a separate item, it would be a question of a definition for the ordinances.
That would then become a definition and would need to go to town meeting and be included in the definitions addendum, correct.
And then that would be permanent?
Well, it would be an ordinance, subject to amendment or repeal by a future town meeting.
Exactly, exactly.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Does that help?
Yes.
I think this is a work in progress.
Oh, Jesus, not really, Dave, I've been involved in this for six months. And actually Monique and Matt and George have been heavily involved in this.
I can see that, right?
Yeah, and they're happy with it, they are.
Be happy with it without the definition at this point.
I like your pushback, Dave.
Well... At some point, I would like to see this be an ordinance. I may like to see it cut in stone a little bit more.
I, I agree completely, Matt, you're in Kenny's harbor. I agree completely, David, and I appreciate the pushback there from you. That's originally what we were kind of aiming for, was if nothing else, at least a definition of commercial fishing. If we couldn't get the right to fish as an ordinance, I think we need to define that as a town, a town that, that, I mean, this is the commercial fishing capital of Maine.
It's like you know it if you see it, right?
Right, exactly. And to further elaborate on that, I think we could even change it from commercial fishing to commercial harvesting, and that would cover clamming, you know, and kind of all commercial fishing activities. It just might be a, a better definition, I think. Did you want to speak to that more, George?
No.
I don't know.
I gotta ask you, what are you afraid of? You've been fishing at Harpswell for 300 years.
Gentrification is a real thing, and it's certainly happening. We see it every day, I mean, we see it with the airboat stuff. You know, I mean, there's a prime example. People complain about the noise from the airboats, but the people that are complaining about the noise from the airboats have come in and bought the land that the clamor used to walk across in, and now posted it. So they're the direct cause of the airboat, and they don't even realize it. And I think that's why we kind of wanted the funding for the educational piece, you know, is to kind of make these people aware. You know, I think we could kind of nip it in the butt if the realtor, when they're selling the house, kind of gave it to the client and said, hey, this is what you're moving into, this is how it's been for, like you said, 300 years, you know?
Well, the airboat thing was decided a couple of years ago.
Right.
It died on the vine.
But I mean, I've heard it, I've heard it down at the wharf I work at, that they just sold the cottages next to it, some affluent people have bought in it, and there's already been complaints that we're too loud at 4:30 in the morning.
Oh, yeah, that's been going on forever.
Right, but I mean, that's, this would protect us from that. You know, I mean, the state does it on its own, you know, and this would just be Harpswell leading the way. You know, there's already been talk of other coastal communities adopting an ordinance like this. If we were to do it, let's, like I've said before at other meetings, let's lead the way. I mean, I don't, I don't see any harm in, in turning this into an ordinance or, or at least defining commercial fishing, you know? I guess I fail to, I'm not a lawyer, but I fail to see the, the pushback, I guess, from the, the legal counsel.
Well, wouldn't any ordinance we do be superseded by the state regulations anyway?
This would be a little bit more...
Fishing's already protected.
To a point, this would be more restrictive.
Could you say how that would be, what would be more restrictive?
Monique can speak to that better than me, I'll let her speak to it.
It's, it's actually very similar to the state's, Monique Coombs, Oars Island. So if I can actually take a step back, too, so part of this comes from, in agriculture, there's something called the right to farm ordinance that has been adopted by not a lot of towns, but quite a few towns, that does similar, where it just protects farmers and their properties from nuisance complaints. At the state level, I think it's actually even called right to farm. And so I started asking the Department of Marine Resources why we didn't have a right to fish rule in the state of Maine. And they said, well, we do kind of, it's, commercial fishing is exempt from criminal nuisance. And so some of the language we took in the right to fish draft is directly from the state. The commercial fishing definition, I believe, is from current use taxation. And then the right to, the, excuse me, the, the criminal nuisance language is almost directly from the state. So it does sort of protect us, but as somebody that works with numerous working waterfront properties along the state, there's a couple of things that are really important to note. One is, not everybody thinks gear storage and gear maintenance is commercial fishing activity. So clarifying that for people is incredibly important. People tend to only think fishing means the act of fishing itself, but you can ask these guys, I mean, most of their job is doing boat maintenance, working on their gear, going in the marine store, and all of these other things. And we have to value that in the state if we want working waterfront and commercial fishing to continue, because not everybody does value that. And then the education and outreach piece is incredibly important with a lot of the work that I've done. Most people, I think, especially when they move to Maine, they want to be here. Um, most people, I think, especially when they move to Maine, they want to be here, they want to eat lobsters, but they don't know what they don't know, and they won't know until we tell them. And so that aspect of identifying funding and being able to provide education and outreach to people that are in CF1 or CF2 or anywhere in Harpswell is incredibly important for mitigating contention. So while it might seem like a lot of funding, it's a lot cheaper than trying to mitigate future contention and larger litigation issues. So, um, I can understand the lawyer's hesitancy, but I get a little bit tired of this, like, analysis paralysis and hesitancy to make a decision that's going to cost us more in the long run. I think if we can make the decision and do well by the commercial fishing community, we can prevent more, um, problems in the future.
So, what, I mean, other than this is not an ordinance, it's, it's a, it's a policy.
Yeah.
What, what others, and it doesn't have a definition in there. If we were to enact this policy, at least as a temporary measure, then with, with going forward, with doing an ordinance in the future, is that okay with you?
It's a start, I mean, that was sort of our, of course, we would prefer something that was a little bit more binding, but we understand, you know, we gotta start where we can start. So if there was, um, commitment, for lack of a better word, that we start here, but try to build, um, I think that that's something those of us in the fishing community would appreciate.
Okay, yeah.
I basically, do you have any more to say before I speak?
No, I said what I said.
I basically, um, see a lot of value in this as it's written and agree with you, Monique, that the education is really important. Um, I think, um, if we were to say, yes, we want to adopt this, the question for me is, how is it going to be implemented? And what plan would, have you begun to think about that? Um, one, who's gonna, who's gonna do it? Um, would it be some kind of a partnership potentially with Maine Coast Fishing Association or whatever? You know, I'm just, who's gonna do it, how are you gonna do it, how much funding is needed? What are the key goals that you would have, um, at least for getting it started and off the ground?
Yeah, I don't necessarily see it with, as a partnership with our, with MCFA. I think MCFA is happy to help provide support, as I'm sure NEFSA would be. I think that this is something that needs to be community-led and driven. Um, and I think that that can happen at a number of different places, harbor and waterfront, marine resources, or I believe it's been asked about having a, a fishing committee of some sort that helps drive some of this work in the past, too, and be able to weigh in on a number of different things that are happening in Harpswell.
Monique, um, are you familiar, I'm sure you're familiar, with the brochure that we had here, the Working Waterfront brochure?
Yeah, we made a new one, Scuttlebutt, that's been around town. Um, it's been handed out at different places.
Do we have them here?
Uh, I believe so, yep, in the front.
Okay, because we're still copying the Working Waterfront one, too, we ran out of the originals, but they fly off our shelf, and so we, we don't seem to have the, I asked about getting them truly printed again. And then Chrissy had mentioned, and the select board will have to help me out on this one. Um, there was the boat, the boat and college, um, they started going around to different locations and wanting to talk to the
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
Whatever that partners.
Coffee House thing they were doing.
Coffee House.
Oh, yeah, 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 with Holly Parker.
Right, and so they, I'm not sure what happened to that, the results of all those meetings, but she thought that that could be one outcome of that group was, um, some additional brochures and, and hands out, handouts. And, and maybe it's something, Mary Ann will remember this, the Conservation Commission, every time somebody new moved in town, um, or on a monthly basis, the assessing office has the spreadsheet. And so we were making labels and the Conservation Commission, different topics. It could, obviously would have to be changed and made more about the commercial fishing, harvesting. Um, but they, we were mailing these brochures to everybody who'd just purchased property. So in case they didn't come into the town office or see something on the website, and, and that could certainly, um, be an approach in this, in this as well, but, um...
So we did Scuttlebutt, a, a guide to living and working in a waterfront community. Um, we got sponsors from town, and I help out, I built out all of the content. Mary Ann helped look at the conservation, there's a couple of pieces of conservation. We built it out a little bit differently than the original guide, to try to make it so that there was just like useful tips and resources that would potentially drive somebody to want to keep it. So there's lobster recipe in it, there's tips for seafood, every place that you can buy seafood, and Harpswell is in it. Um, it's, it costs a lot to print it, although we recently did a guide for Brunswick as well. Um, we worked with some of their committees in town and local businesses, and we did it with Scuttlebutt for Brunswick, um, and worked with the Times Record, who printed it pretty cheaply. We got like 20,000 copies or something ridiculous like that, and it went out in, um, the July issue or some issue of, to the Times Record. Um, we worked with the town of Goldsboro, they have a group called Goldsboro Shore Access. They developed a Scuttlebutt guide, um, it's available on their website. All three of those guides are available on the MCFA website. And I'm working with the town of Phippsburg and St. George to also produce a guide. It's important that those guides are built in the community with community members, because each community is different. Um, but that's, so that's like the point with this, this policy, is, you know, to get 20,000 copies printed was a few thousand dollars. But not everybody also wants something on paper, so creating like a postcard that has a QR code with information or just other opportunities to share it online or via the town website is not super cost prohibitive. Um, and like I said, we already have that Scuttlebutt done. Um, we can't accept responsibility for constantly getting it printed. I mean, there was one place that kept asking us for copies, and, you know, we'll give them, but after a while, it's like, okay, we, we need other sponsors or things to, to pitch in to be able to keep doing this, but, you know? Um, and it can be updated pretty easily. So, you know, I, again, I think that education and outreach to people who are just less familiar with living by the coast, and especially by commercial fishing businesses, is a good way to try to alleviate contention, because again, people just don't know what they don't know. Um, you know, after the unfortunate shark attack happened, I don't know if you guys remember, the DMR told everybody to look for schools of fish, and you guys started to get calls about what a school of fish looks like. It's hilarious, right? But if you don't live by the water, the only, like, thing that you know about a school of fish is Nemo. So I wrote a blog post about it and had, you know, pictures of, like, what a school of poggies looks like, what it sounds like. We had over 3,000 hits on that page on our website. So people want the information, the town has to have an opportunity to give it to them. Um, and I think this kind of thing, again, it just sort of creates that. So it's nice as a policy, it's better as an ordinance.
So, Mr. Chairman, are you looking to enact this tonight, the way it stands?
See, I'm, I'm a little confused, Matt, do you mind getting up there again?
Yeah.
I get an email from you, well, also from Amy, saying that it looks good. This is from Monique, and then sent it to you, then I got one from you, that you agree, Monique, it looks good, or you're a little commercial, how the definition of commercial fishing was added. Then you come here tonight and saying you don't like the whole damn thing.
No, I do like it, I, I just like it better as an ordinance.
It didn't come across that way.
Well, I would like to see it as an ordinance, is what I was saying, versus a policy. I think a policy is a great start, you know, but I would like to see an ordinance enacted, because it's more binding, like Monique said.
Right.
Um, but I think this is a, a wonderful start, and I apologize if it didn't come off that way, but that wasn't my intention. I'd like to see it binding that every realtor that sells a house in town has to distribute that Scuttlebutt or some type of educational material before, like, when they're showing houses in town. I think we can nip it in the butt before the people even get here.
Oh, trust me, as a board, we have to deal with that more than you do.
I'm sure.
Just across the bay here, the, one of the small town landings, you know, people bought houses along there, you know clam diggers, they go at strange hours. All of a sudden, they're upset, and the town, Harpswell was down there for a while, also. You know, we, we deal with it all the time.
Yeah, I mean, we do, too, on the water.
We just say, sorry, you know?
Yeah.
Well, I, I look at this as a blueprint for a future ordinance.
Right, that's, that's kind of what we're hoping. You know, I think, I think it's excellent as a policy, I think it's even better as an ordinance.
Right, it's not one and done, but...
Yeah, that's, that's all I got.
Well, I move we enact this, then, as a start.
I will second.
Oh.
Oh, some, some more comments, sorry.
Yep, opposed and seconded, now we good.
More, more discussion?
George Prince-Hopsonneck, um, first, I'd like to thank you, Slatman Chipman, for your comments and your pushback against the attorney. Um, commercial fishing is the most vital industry in our town, it's also the oldest, we need to protect it. Um, like Matt, uh, if we want to change some wording, commercial fishing and harvesting from the ocean, possibly, to include, uh, shellfish harvesting, clamming, et cetera, aquaculture. Um, to answer your question, Kevin, why it's important to, uh, move this into an ordinance, we now have boats leaving literally 24 hours a day and returning 24 hours a day in the lobster industry. The, uh, fisheries move further offshore, these guys are telling where they're fishing, okay? This, this, I would relate it to the shrimp industry that we had a decade ago in Cundy's Harbor. Boats leaving at 2:30 in the morning, returning 8:30, 9, 10 o'clock at night. Uh, depending on where they're fishing, you never know, might be coming in at 1:30 in the morning, unloading and turning around at 2, 2:30 and heading right back out. So, uh, we understand our boats are loud, our bait stinks, our trap piles aren't pretty, lights are bright, but we need to be protected. And this, this, this doesn't give us any special rights, this is just protecting what we already have. And, uh, I think it's something that we can all, all get on board with. Um, also, I don't see any cost to the town with this. Uh, we're doing this on our own, we're working through the legislative process, you know, with the attorneys. We're, we're, we started with a draft, we've written it, we've rewritten it, we've, we've redone it. I mean, Monique spent countless hours on this, and, uh, so, again, appreciate the comments, and I would like to see this, a more stringent rule turned into an ordinance, thank you.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not against any of it.
I know, Kevin, I know, I know, just, uh, hopefully that's the path forward.
Yep.
Thank you.
I gotta tell a story. On Monday...
It's six minutes of public speaking.
Okay, oh, it'll be a lot less than that.
Speaking of ordinancees.
I was hauling on Monday, and there's a person that just recently bought a house that's got a float. And last year, I remember last fall he was here, and I was hauling my string right down by his boat in front of his float. And he ran in his house and got his binoculars and a notebook and a pen, and he wrote down my registration numbers. And I'd forgotten all about it until Monday. He did the exact same thing. He's trying to intimidate me not to fish in front of his float. So it's not just nighttime offshore issues, there's close to land issues, you know? And every time you do a mooring, a float, a pier with a float, at the end of it, it always says, the harbor master says it, doesn't infringe on the rights of others. That's not true. Floats and piers have always infringed on the rights of others. If they're in the ocean, they've infringed on the rights of others, they're fish. Now, I'm just a little guy, fish hole, I don't come and go, but I can see the day when these people with these floats can say, no, you're too close to my float, you can't put your traps that close to my float, it's already happening, I see it, so. I mean, protect everybody.
I suggest you put more traps in front of his float.
I do.
He just made it official.
You heard it here, folks.
Who's gonna get you when I put it across his ankle on for his float?
Nobody.
Me, there's nobody come after you.
That's why I can say that.
Um, just one thing, George, I don't know if I misheard you, but there is a clause in here about the town, we'll find a funding, create a funding mechanism. It, it will be costing the taxpayers one way or the other, unless all of the funds that, that funding mechanism is private donations or grants. Did I mishear you?
For what, for the town's attorney?
No, no, for the, for the policy, part of the policy.
Article two, the funding.
Fund the education and the outreach.
Well, I apologize, I wasn't aware of that, this, I mean, we wrote this on our own.
It doesn't necessarily mean tax dollars.
No, it doesn't mean, but it could, it could mean, it could mean.
And we've had, I've had discussions with, with Monique, I think, about this, you know, down the road, if some funding needs to be, you know, considered what we spent on shellfish, you know, we, you know? We've had this conversation many times, you know? What we spent on shellfish is, and what we spent on the lobster industry is a pittance, yeah.
My assumption is it would be minimal, if any, and so far, it doesn't cost the town anything. And, uh, we're close, let's push it across the finish line.
Well, we spent, sent $10,000 to Washington for, uh, legal fees.
On, on this?
No, to the Maine Lobstermen's Association.
Yeah, but that's nothing to do with this, that's nothing to do with this.
I think he was just noting.
Right, correct, correct, and we appreciate that. I remember, I was there the day that was voted in at town meeting, we appreciate that.
If money needs to be spent, you know, the town will, will come up with it.
Yeah.
I also think, I agree with you on, on, uh, tax, taxpayer funding for an effort like this. I also think if there's an effort to encourage private donations in the community, that is one way of raising awareness as well and developing support. If people support this kind of education and outreach, they may be advocates themselves. But we do have a public information printing budget. Yes. That we can certainly use, and we have a tax bill insert coming up. And obviously, we should mention something about, if the board proceeds with adopting it this evening, we should put that in that bulletin that goes to every taxpayer.
Yep.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Any more discussion on this, what we voted on?
Morons to this plan?
Eventually. Hey, 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 you can't talk, Chris, until you get up there.
I'll talk to him about it.
You have to stand up, you have to stand up. You gotta get the podium.
Everybody wants to hear your lovely voice.
Morons are ridiculous in town.
Oh, never mind, you're off topic, wait till public comment at the end.
You just told me to get up here.
I thought you were gonna speak to the subject.
I am, this is part of this whole plan.
Morings?
You don't think morons are affecting fishermen? I'm pretty sure they affect fishermen.
You, you want to...
I mean, in Mackinac Cove alone, we've got dozens of morons that haven't been paid for in 10 years that are sitting there, but yet they keep putting new ones out, instead of getting rid of the old ones that are sitting there, they're putting new ones in prime lobster territory in the mud. It's making the cove fishing smaller and smaller. Now, I guess, you know, I'm just a little guy, but I've fished there my whole life, and I'm being driven out of that zone. And the harbor master told me recently that it's your fault, the Slatman's fault, because you won't pay him enough to get rid of morons. Okay, just tell him what I was going...
It's always our fault.
Yeah, six minutes, throw.
This is right after he drove me out of my boat and injured my knee.
Oh, boy.
With no apology, what's the level?
Never really, never really ends, does it?
No.
Anyway, all in favor?
Very good.
Mark, if you're still awake.
Ha! Uh-oh. I told, I told Terry I had to go home at 6:30. She obviously did not pass that message along to the chair.
You didn't make it.
Uh, home sharing outreach, um, excuse me, I'm stepping on somebody's pen here. Um, two weeks ago, you said, uh, go ahead with a outreach program to make the community aware of the state housing, um, home sharing effort. Um, and that included four pieces, if you will, in what you approved. Um, the anchor, wherever they went, oop, they went out there. Um, actually, the anchor followed up on that, um, at the last meeting, uh, interviewed Ben and me and Courtney, Courtney's still here, and, uh, wrote a fairly extensive article, uh, that's online and will be in the August anchor. Um, and so that was sort of the first part. Uh, the second part was to develop a flyer, informational piece that could be used a number of ways. Uh, one of those would be to, uh, send it as an email to the town's master email list. And secondly, to mail it old-fashioned way to, um, a select group of homeowners that may be most likely to be interested in the program. Um, Ben and the Affordable Housing Working Group have gone back and forth on a flyer that can be used in, for multiple purposes. And there was one in your packet, but it's been revised slightly. If you want to see it, I have black and white copies of it somewhere. I don't know what I did with them. And so, what's been happening is Ben has worked with Debbie Turner to use people, households that are veterans or use the senior property tax program to create a mailing list of people who might be at least interested or have connections who might be interested. And so, that's about ready to go. And then, the fourth piece, I guess it is, was to reach out to community groups and organizations. The HA steering committee, I guess it's called, met the other day and approved, I guess you would call it collaborating with the town to reach out through their people and volunteers, to reach folks. And Courtney has a program. Do you want to talk about what you're gonna do? To reach out to the libraries, the stores, the churches, whatever.
You're talking my whole thing.
Sorry.
Stealing.
You owe me your talk.
Stealing.
Courtney Snellings, Ora's Island. So, I was going to take the intern, Ben, around town with me and stop in at Watson's and Biggs and Uncle Pete's and Cook's and the library and whatever and take some of these around and ask people whether they'd be willing to put them up. They were very nice to me when I took information about the affordable housing meetings. They were very kind to, you know, to take that. So, I thought that we would, I'll give him a little bit of experience. And we'll go around town and take some of these things, see if people will have them on hand and be willing to, you know, post them so that perhaps we can get some folks who are interested in signing up with Nesterly. So, that's, that's what I'm doing, just kind of trying to contact as many people as possible, you know, the churches, and just see if we can spread the word.
As a matter of fact, someone asked me the other day about the possibility of renting out extra space in their house.
Really?
So, I'm gonna give, I'm gonna give them this one right here.
Oh, excellent. Oh, we'll get more copies of that. Well, that's what we're hoping. That the word will spread around. People will either want to rent from or rent to. Fingers crossed.
I, just one question popped in my mind as you were talking about this outreach and letting people know that Nesterly services could be available in the option, could be to have help in following through on wanting to rent something or find a place to live. Is there any way to get feedback on what's happening in that respect?
Good question.
How many people actually end up inviting people to share housing or rent a spare, you know, rent a attic apartment or something like that?
Would Nesterly provide that kind of information?
I would imagine that Nesterly would be willing if they were contacted. I mean, the steering committee for HA had a Zoom with them yesterday. It was Noel and her 10-month-old baby, because apparently the nanny was sick. And Bill said, don't worry, everybody else has had kids, so. And she was very personable. So, I don't see they're sending us a regular report.
No, no, no.
But I, I would be very surprised if I were to contact them and said, have you had anybody from Harpswell? That they would say, sorry, we can't tell you that. So, and I'm happy to do that.
We don't want their names or anything like that, but I mean, just the numbers, I think, would be helpful.
Agreed. It's a very good suggestion. Thank you, David. I'm happy to do that.
It's Jane, actually.
But I think, I think the question is.
Thank you, Jane.
They, they, there may be constraints that they have that we don't know about. But it's all, you know, with any kind of education campaign and public outreach, getting feedback about the impact of it is really, really hard. So, just something to think about and see what we might be able to do creatively. And maybe the state is getting information. I don't know.
I have looked at the website and they do seem to have spots where they have people, like little heads, in various places that are either wanting to rent out or wanting to rent. So, I'm wondering whether maybe we'll see some little heads in Harpswell.
No, we, I want numbers. I don't want heads.
I can count the heads. Thank you.
And, and then the other piece, which I don't have an answer for, that Mr. Chipman proposed two weeks ago, was in terms of the television station. I have asked Maine Housing if they could provide us with the webinar that was done back two or three months ago. It's an excellent webinar. And I know Courtney watched it. And it starts with, and, and what's, what's good about it from my perspective is that it's the senior center at UNE, it's the Maine AARP, it's Maine Housing, it's a group that's working in Saco, and then it's Nesterly. So, it sort of covers that. I think the, it runs maybe, from my memory, maybe 35 or 40 minutes. And I've asked Maine Housing if we could get that, but I get one of those. I'm not available. If you want to do something, call this number. And so, I assume Eric is on vacation and hopefully, we can connect with him, because that would be a perfect piece to, to do. And I was thinking we could do that with just a, you know, a 30-second or one-minute intro.
Sure.
And so, we're working on that.
All right. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything else? Are we okay with everything and?
I think so.
I mean, I, I, this is gonna be kind of a blast in the sense that people might hear this from two or three different sources. And I think the message that's important is that this might not be appropriate for Kevin, but he may know somebody whose mother is living alone and this could be something that talk to her kids about. That's really the way the network of Nesterly is, is hopefully gonna work. That it's this reaching out, making contact. And children have been a primary obstacle to this kind of arrangement because they think everybody that's gonna move in is a gangster or gonna rob my mom blind or what have you. And the Nesterly program is set up to try and provide safeguards against that.
I'm assuming we need to approve this flyer.
I don't think so.
It's not finished yet. No.
That's basically the final draft.
Yeah, that's the final draft.
You previously approved this outreach, this campaign and flyer, so you don't.
So, that covers it.
If you had suggested changes, but if you're okay with it, I think they can proceed.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Good job.
You might just stay there a second.
Oh, he.
Oh, okay.
October 31st.
So, it's recommended by staff that we extend the contract with Plan ME until October 31st. And then, for him to be a mentor to our new planner and finish up some projects. And then, after October 31st, based on different special projects that may be going on, we can negotiate something at that time. But tonight's extension is to go through October 31st.
I would like October 31st, 2025. Is that okay with you?
No.
All right. I.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
And, you know, I keep saying to Christie, this is intended to be a wind-down process and that hopefully, the planner that you have hired tonight will ramp up. But I, I think my plan, and I'm not sure Christie is fully on board with it, is sorted to meter out the responsibilities because there is a lot going on. And I think if we tell the new planner that he's gotta go to eight committee meetings and two public hearings in August, that might be overload to start him off. So, that's really the plan.
You know, that's kind of been one of my questions all along. Is it gonna be necessary for him to go to all the committee hearings that you've been sucked into?
He's like a key resource.
Yep.
I'm throwing that pen away. The answer to that question is that's entirely up to you and the administrator. I would say the, there is a problem of kind of going in and out if you expect that person or me to do things. And so, Mary Ann is sitting back there. And I only periodically show up at the conservation commission these days when it looks like there's something on the agenda that I should be involved in. But sometimes, that creates problems because I don't know what happened in the two meetings before that. And so, that's really a judgment, Kevin.
Yeah.
As to how to best utilize that person. I don't think it's good to have them, have him go to a meeting simply to sit there and be at the meeting. And that's really a judgment call. I think the chairs of the committee need to be involved in that in terms of saying, what do you need out of this person?
I think it can be flexible that way, but one, one of the great ways to know his upcoming job is to know what these committees are working on that pertains to planning. So, that might be one way that he gets caught up on.
And that's on my schedule.
And then, it can be more flexible after that, I think.
Yeah. I, I mean, I think there's sort of the, the first round of saying, okay, you know, I envision me sort of bringing them up to speed and then going to the first one or two committee meetings and seeing how the chairs think they can use him productively.
But you, you have spoiled us, Mark. No, you know, no doubt about it.
Well, do you want my address to send the bonus check to after?
Christmas bonus.
I, I would just comment, Mr. Chipman. You approved an extension of agreement for the same hourly rate as it was eight years ago or seven years ago.
This is part of the spoiling I'm talking about.
Anything else?
No. I move we approve this a second.
Second.
It's the last time we do this. All in favor?
Hopefully.
I meant for you. Hopefully.
Okay.
All right. Treasurers' report.
Good evening. Terry Goddout wearing the treasurer hat at this time. I wanted to report on the town's finances as of June 30th, 2024. Balance sheet items, cash balances was $2.7 million. The town, primarily from the town's short-term borrowing, which closed on May 1, have drawn down $1.8 million. Will need probably about $1.3 million next week with the upcoming school payment and the large warrant this evening. And managing that very closely, so getting, to try to minimize the impact of the high interest rate that was still not expected to have been that high at the time when we needed our tan. 2023 taxes outstanding is just over $27,000. The tax collector recorded liens for those unpaid taxes on June 17th. Several payments have come in, so that has been reduced. The outstanding taxes for 2022 will go to lien, excuse me. They are in lien right now and they will be foreclosed upon in early December if they remain unpaid. But I will work and call each of those people and they typically do pay them, so that's good. Revenue and expense items, non-property tax revenue available to reduce the tax commitment is just under $1.6 million, about 55% of the forecast, which is right where we should be at six months into 2024. Our excise tax, which is our single largest source of revenue outside of taxes, is ahead of 2023 and above, ahead of the 2024 forecast as well. There's the standard revenues that appear to be exceeded due to the due dates, state revenue sharing. We did increase that forecast quite a bit this year and it is slightly ahead of the forecast for six months. So, it's right where that needs to be as well. Both permits and recycling center fees are ahead of 2023 and the 2024 forecast. And July and September are usually the highest revenue months for those categories, so those revenues are looking good. And any revenues, the bottom line that exceeds our forecast will be available in our unassigned fund balance that can then help reduce the tax commitment, can be appropriated for different purposes, all helping the tax, keep the tax rate low. The town has received just under $100,000 for insurance payments relating to the town dock on the damage from the January storms. We haven't closed that case yet, but at least we have received that additional payment. On, on the expense side, March 9th voters approved the town's budget. And there's nothing really outstanding at this point on expenses. The category, some categories appear to exceed at six months. That's just based on the timing of payments, contract payments at the beginning of the month, examples like that. Insurance is all paid all at once. As far as reserve expenditures, we've paid that for primarily our media equipment upgrade, recycling center phase two, Mitchell Field boat launch, which you should probably, you'll be hearing more about in two weeks. We do expect a contract amendment from GEI, so back for discussion at the board level. And engineering relating to Peabody Road and improvements to Little Island Road. And all due to the January storm. And I do want to point out, Mike Drake, your fire administrator, has done a fabulous, outstanding job keeping, being the EMA, the emergency management agent and liaison with FEMA. He's got several projects that have been completed and submitted. And, and we expect payment in four to six months, which is defined quick with them, that Mike points out. But he continues to make sure that every time they ask for something, even if it's the seventh time, because you have to have, resubmit multiple things for different files. He's done a really good job in that area. And so, Little Island, for example, we just heard from our engineer. It will need a permit, so that project's been delayed. But Mike immediately knows when the deadline is that it has to be done and is there to guide us to make sure that we can continue to work with the engineer, that we complete this and get the funding that maximize our benefits with the FEMA funding due to the declared storm, the declared disaster, excuse me. ARPA funding, we have spent $20,000 on the heating assistance program and planning services related to the comprehensive plan update. And I did answer some questions separately from select board members earlier, but always my door is open if you have any further questions.
I just have, have one that I didn't ask you ahead of time. Are there any claims outstanding from the insurance company? You said the pots. Are there any claims outstanding from the insurance company? You said the Potts Point dock is still open. Are there any other?
No, so the only, I, I should have, Potts Point was the substant, the, almost all of the payment, but we did receive a minor payment for the roof damage to the transfer station, Scale Shack and to the EMS building. Other than that, that's our only insurance claims because they, they won't reimburse for trails and things of that nature. So, but you did just make me think of something else. Oh, another upcoming insurance claim though, and we're still working through that, is, I, I think I skipped over this, but on capital expenditures, our emergency communications equipment. Hopefully the board knows that that has gone live. And actually at your prior meeting, or the one before that, we had that severe thunder and lightning storm during the meeting here, our new equipment was struck on the tower.
First I've heard.
But RCM, the company who did a great job, they were there, they, at the same time, it also, that storm caused a fire just up from Mitchell Field. So it, it was all, and we saw, my husband saw the tower get struck by lightning. And AT&amp;T's generator had gone off and had been alarming since that storm and they've been out to fix it a couple of times. But we are working with RCM. They have reported it to their insurance company because the town had not accepted. They had just finished it that day. Installation that day. But, but when you speak with them, it's very positive to hear from RCM that the system did exactly what it should have done. There was just two pieces of equipment damaged and they're the ones that should take the hit because they are on the tower, they're, they're exposed. But they, that equipment stopped the damage from continuing down into all of the key, rest of the key equipment.
Sacrificial equipment.
They're working with their insurance company and, which may work with ours. So we're not sure exactly whose insurance that will go through, but we are working on that. But I, I just wanted to say that RCM was there. They immediately replaced that equipment and got our community. And the system did exactly what it should have done, is it continued to work now that we have the triangle of communication. But it, it was a little spotty during that fire, as a matter of fact. But the next day they were able to replace it and get it fully 100% up. So while that's disappointing on the same day it was installed, it's good news to know that the system they designed is exactly working how it should.
I know the pages are working because during the boat dedication, whether 50 or 60, and they all went off at 6:10. It's like a symphony out there.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Terry.
Thank you.
Accept cash donations.
So yours, David, you're looking at me. Oh, they're fairly easy. I move that we accept these donations. Harpswell Realty Group, Ron Hutchins, $1,500 for the bandstand, Wayne and Nancy Hurst, $100 for the bandstand. Rebecca Gallery, $250 for the bandstand. Weltry Incorporated, which is Jeff Gillis, $250 for the bandstand. Harpswell Garden Club, Marty Grassi, $50 for heating. Diane Lofferton and Marty Grassi, for Marty Grassi, $200 for heating. Nancy Bennett, $100 for heating. William Merriman Macklin, $250 for the bandstand. Wayne and Nancy Hurst, $100 for the bandstand. The donation box is $548.55, Johnny Cash, they call it. Dorothy David, $50 for the bandstand. And Gregory Bestick, $250 for the bandstand. And I move that we accept those.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Maine Municipal Association's legislative policy committee.
The boards don't always decide to vote on this, but we always do bring it to you if you wanted to vote. There's, Harpswell only votes for one. Most municipalities vote for two, but Brunswick appoints one LPC member. You can decline to vote if you do not know Kerry or did not have enough information in the profile. Or this, this current board tends to have been voting for this, so it's up to the, what do you like to do?
She wants to do it.
Well, I assume the town clerk is an upstanding citizen and probably would do a good job.
I've heard her name before.
Yeah, I move that we, we put a check mark next to her name.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Public comment?
You asked for it.
Chris Kaufman, Bailey Island. Did anybody from the town of Harpswell apply for that town planning job besides me?
You?
Yeah.
Did he apply?
Oh, I must, I must not have been sent.
Oh, that must be.
But no, seriously, did anybody from the town of Harpswell apply for that job?
Yes.
Yes.
And why were they denied?
We're, we're not going to go into details about people's backgrounds, Chris, but there's an interview team that interviewed the candidates and the recommendation came out that Matthew James was the best candidate for Harpswell.
No, at least he's not from Portland. But, I mean, I personally, as a taxpayer, wouldn't mind seeing somebody planning our town that lives in town, you know, just saying. I mean, back in 1996, when the town planning office came along, somebody stood up here and said, "Is this a permanent position?" And the town at the time said, "Oh, no. Surely in the next two or three years, we can plan out 20 or 30 years." And we've had a town planner ever since. So that was wrong.
That's not the way.
And I'm glad to hear that a select board can change what another select board has done.
On some things, yeah.
Yeah. No, no, it sounded like everything. It doesn't sound like anything's permanent from what the town planner said. I was really interested in that because I'm thinking about some parking ordinances that should never have been done during LNG. So anyway. But moorings, that's why I came, basically. Moorings are a problem and they are part of the fishing community. And I'm trying to figure out what the incentive for me to pay my moorin fees are. When I drive by dozens with four stickers stated for removal on them daily, I know of two that have been there 10 years. And then a local opstman moved from, you know, One Cove into Macro Cove, wicked nice guy, borrowed somebody's moorin, wants a new moorin. They put him halfway down to Land's End. You know, and I'm thinking to myself, while I drive by all these moorings, I'm like, for 10 years, some of them for 10 years. And I'm, I asked our master and he said, "Ask the selectmen. They won't give me the money to remove them."
Well, we do have the new moorin puller.
Yeah, I know. Where is it?
Well, I'll tell you right now, nobody wants to deal with Macro Cove. It's, it's a hornet's nest. You've got half a dozen fishermen that have two boats apiece, you know? The bigger boats, when you and I were kids growing up, were out the mouth of the cove. Now, the head of the cove, you've got 42, 46-foot boats lying there, taking up space. And a lot of these guys have two boats. You know, the commercial boats far outnumber pleasure boats in Macro Cove. There, there might be some of Doug's old moorings out there they haven't got.
We had a great, this is one of the reasons I was so reluctant to join any committees for the last few years. Because we had a plan when Brian Soper was the selectman, I mean, harbor master. And we had a good plan. And we worked on it a long time with the Harbor and Waterfront Committee. And we came up with a great plan. And a lot of fishermen were on board, which was rare at the time. And then, I'm not sure what happened, but just threw it out. The selectman at the time just said, "No." No, there was something about it, the town attorney didn't like it, or I'm not sure what happened. So it, it came close. But yes, it's a hornet's nest. And I, I do agree, I mean, like Jakish, there's a cottage out there. They were, they put in three giant moorings where there's a lot of alegrass, and I know you're very, because I've heard you talk about this. Three large moorings for one house. Now there's no alegrass there because those moorings are empty most of the time and the chain goes around and around. Not to mention the good fishing ground in that alegrass that I used to fish in. Three moorings for one cottage in that location, it just seems, you know, because they're rich. So $200 and something dollars, nothing to them per moorin, right? But isn't that excessive? Isn't three more? I mean, they need it now because they lost their pier and their float, which was never supposed to be out there in the winter anyway, because it sat right in the plant, had to be removed every winter. Well, they removed it for the first two years and the next 20 years it stayed right there, so. But there's problems with the moorings and I'm just trying to figure out why I should keep paying mine. If somebody can do it for 10 years without paying their moorin and nothing's ever done, why would I pay mine? That's what's going on. I mean, winters are long and you can't tell me our harbor master is so busy in the winter that he can't get on that. Now he'll go after me, I'm sure.
But now you're bringing attention to yourself, yeah.
I don't care, really. I mean, he, I already had somebody come after me. Him in the beginning, I think it was, put a sticker on my moorin. I get it on my bathroom wall now. Every time I use the bathroom, I look at that sticker, stated from removal, because I didn't have the numbers on it. Well, the numbers were on it. He just didn't look close enough. But, I don't know. There's got to be something that can be done, you know? The five to one, six to one is ridiculous. Mine's one and a half to one, literally. There's a couple of moorings that have been there 10 years. I just hauled one up. If my phone wasn't dead, I'd show you the picture, that I've been messing with for 10 years. And I finally got it off the bottom, hooked to a trap. I didn't mean to, obviously. The poly ball came up, all crushed and sunk. And that thing's been hanging me up for 10 years. I'm tired of it. So anyway, there ought to be a limit to moorings in the cove.
Thanks, Chris.
There ought to be a line somewhere in that cove. And there was when Brian Soper was there. It was Nubble Edge, the red building. That was it. No more moorings out past that. Here we go. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Anybody else to public speaking? Darn. Other business? Anything else, Terry?
Just wanted to ask the select board to keep, August 1st is not a regularly scheduled meeting for the select board, but we are hopeful Debbie may be, this is tentative. I don't, I don't want to put that pressure on Debbie, but tentatively may be ready to set the mill rate on August 1st.
Oh, I guess her and I'll be sitting down on the 29th. We'll put mill rate question mark.
Thank you.
All right. If there's nothing else, we're adjourned.